Want to turn those on, Teresa, so we know?
Janey, we're ready to go.
There we are, Jeff.
We're okay, Jeff.
Welcome to the Lincoln City Council Meeting of November 17th to 2014. Let us all rise to the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a period of silent meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with L.B. 898, a copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted at the back of the chamber. The order of business of the city council is as follows. The clerk will call the items listed on the agenda under public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on an item should come forward after the clerk reads that item. The applicant and those in favor should speak first, then those opposed. The applicant may then make one short rebuttal. Each speaker should begin by stating name, address, and whether you are speaking in favor or in opposition to the item, and if you have a tough name to spell, please spell it for us. Testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker. After all public hearings, the council will vote on resolutions and items listed under third reading. On the second last meeting of the month immediately prior to adjournment, anyone may speak on any issue not on the agenda for that date nor plan for a future agenda, and this is an open meeting night. Mayor, I will turn the table over to you, sir.
Thank you, sir, and thank you to all the members of the council for once again allowing us to present the Mayor's Award of Excellence this time for the month of October, and it's being presented to Chad. He's part of our IS Division, Information Services, within the Finance Department. He's a microcomputer support specialist and has worked with the city since 2004. He was nominated by Chief Information Officer Steve Henderson and Lisa Porter with NACR. They nominated him in the categories of Customer Relations, Loss Prevention, and Productivity for his work to implement the new VoIP phone system, as well as implementing separately a video conferencing system within city and county government. NACR, by the way, is the acronym for the company who supplied the VoIP phones. VoIP is an acronym for itself, for Voice Over Internet Protocol, the system that delivers phone services over existing, our existing data network. Chad was the primary project manager for the conversion from the Centrex landline system to the Avea VoIP system. He quickly educated himself about the new technology and then spent many days with each department in our government to understand their needs. He was then able to make recommendations on exactly which features and functions of the new system would most improve communications and, in many cases, save both money and resources. Steve said many staff members told him that Chad indeed addressed their unique circumstances very well, displayed excellent customer service, and demonstrated strong technical abilities. Lisa was the NACR representative who worked with IS on the VoIP project. She told Steve that she and the entire NACR project team were extremely impressed by Chad's work on the project. She wrote Chad did a fabulous job up front, knowing the needs of most of the departments. When something new came up that he was not aware of, he simply took a can-do attitude and worked closely with NACR and their technical folks to figure things out. She praised his ability to complete the project without additional expense and to provide outstanding customer service. Chad gathered information and educated more than 2,000 users on the new system and its feature, and after each major conversion, he made adjustments quickly to meet the users' goals, found the time and the resources to address all issues. Lisa said it was very apparent to the NACR team that IS and the city trusted and valued Chad's abilities and opinions. She said that in NACR's experience with large conversions, schedules usually have to be adjusted to maintain the same level of support to the users, and Chad continued to focus on quality and made sure that no department lost service for any appreciable length of time. With regard to video conferencing, the second project, when video conferencing for Lincoln Fire and Rescue became a high priority, Steve said Chad managed these two separate projects simultaneously. People were concerned that he could do both. He assured them he could, and in fact, he did. Because video conferencing was also new to the city and to the county, implementation also required a great deal more education among the workforce. Chad worked through all the requirements to ensure success. In addition to leading the installation of video conferencing capabilities for both city, county, and LFR, he also led the video conferencing projects for the several courts of the county and Lancaster County Corrections, also staffs that rely upon this system to conduct business every day. Steve wrote, "Over the course of the last two years, Chad has spent countless hours, many of them late at night and on the weekends, to make these projects successful. In today's workplace, we all face the continual challenge of balancing the demands of career while continuing to lead a meaningful and positive personal life." And Steve says that Chad has been successful on both these counts. And I think his wife is here today.
Yep.
You still married?
Still married.
Pretty good evidence. Lisa wrote, "These valuable skills that Chad possesses will benefit the city and county now and for years to come. Everybody associated with him is very proud of what he's doing. So it's my pleasure today to present Chad with the Mayor's Award of Excellence for October. Please join me in congratulating him." I think the man who knows him pretty well wanted to say a few words about him, too.
Just wanted to say a couple of things. Back in 2011, when we were getting ready to pick a vendor for this, Chad was heavily involved in that, and that involved a review of proposals that was stacked about this high. It was very technical. He started with it back then. I was talking to somebody I know that has a system like this in a big company here in Lincoln, and what they told me was, "Well, don't let anybody tell you differently. You're going to have problems with this." And so I was fairly concerned about that. And then in the summer of 2012, I learned that the first big, what they call, "cut-over" was the building next door with all public safety and the courts, county attorney and so on. I thought, "Oh, great, this is probably not the best thing to do the first one on." But that went fine, and everyone after that went well as well. And the thing was, nobody was out without phone service for a significant amount of time, if at all. They did these on Friday nights and worked over the weekend if necessary, and we had phone service working on Monday morning, which, of course, was extremely important. I would like to thank the other members of the Information Services Division that helped support this effort behind the scenes, and also compliment NACR and Lisa Porter in particular about being a very good vendor for the city and the county to work with. This will save, over the next, well, after the next couple of years, we'll be saving six figures every year because of the fact that we have this system. There was about 2,800 extensions. Chad touched the desktops of probably the big majority of those, and as the mayor said, he did a wonderful job of communicating with customers. So he's very deserving of this award, and I'm very glad that he received it.
I'd like to thank you, or say thank you to everybody. It was a very large job. I couldn't have done it without the rest of the networking team: Ben Ramirez, Jeff Jones, Mike Ketchel. All of them have been a big help in this project. So I'd just like to thank all of them and the rest of the IS staff, and the mayor and Steve today. So, thank you.
Jay, you want to introduce your family?
Yes. My wife, Kim, my son, Braxton, my daughter, Lillian, and the little one in the way back, Annabelle. So she's the one that's yelling most of the time.
Very good. Very good. Thank you very much. We'll give everybody a minute to transition if those who would like to leave.
Does that include any of us?
That had a heart attack. I saw Steve and all these people and thought we were back to budget again.
Yeah. I don't even know our budgeting hearings were that full.
While we're getting out, J-School, do we have any J-School people here tonight? If you do, raise your hand, please. If you want to, when we're done, we'll explain exactly what we're doing here for you if you hang around for a little bit. If you don't want to, that's okay, too. We'll go on with it. Teresa, jump right in.
Certainly. Our first item would be our public hearing consent agenda, items 1 through 13.
Okay. Anybody who would like to speak to this item, these items? Anybody who'd like to speak to these items? Staff questions? Next item, please.
All right, we can vote on these items. Item 1 was introduced by Camp.
So moved.
Moved by Trent.
Second.
Seconded by Larian. Discussion, caller old.
Christensen.
Yes.
Cook.
Yes.
Emery.
Yes.
Eskridge.
Yes.
Fellers.
Gaylor Baird.
Yes.
Motion carried, 6 to 0. Items 4, 5, 6, 8, and 9 were introduced by Christensen.
So moved.
Seconded.
Seconded by Larian. Discussion, caller old.
Christensen.
Yes.
Cook.
Yes.
Emery.
Yes.
Eskridge.
Yes.
Fellers.
Yes.
Gaylor Baird.
Yes.
Motion carried, 6 to 0. Next item would be our public hearing liquor resolutions. I'll call item 14, the manager application of Christine Jackson for Fuzzy's Taco Shop at 1442 O Street.
Come right on forward, please. Oh, please.
They were re-notified that they had to appear.
Well, okay. We'll move on.
Okay. Next would be items 15 and 16, application of Sooners or Later, Inc., in doing business as Buffalo Wild Wings, for a Class I liquor license at 8701 Andromat Drive, and the related manager application of Jared Bourne.
Good afternoon, council members.
Anne, do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you really believe it to be?
I do.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is David Rasmussen. I'm the attorney for Sooners or Later, and with me today is Katrin Reeprechter. Previously discussed with you that the manager, Jared Bourne, is not able to be here today. He's the one applying for this. He is down in Arkansas, opening up a new location. So Katrin's going to be here today to answer any questions about this regard's liquor license, the Class I, for 8701 Andromat Drive. That's the former Florio's Benigan's location.
You want to do a commercial for your company? You're welcome to.
Hello, I am Kat Reeprechter. I have worked for the company for about eight, nine years, and so I am Jared's regional manager, and I've worked with him for several years. So I'm just filling in on his behalf and here to answer any questions you might have.
Okay. Any questions? Carl.
I've seen your ads.
Yes.
And some of the ads show athletic events? And you can manipulate outcomes and things?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
I was the control master on Saturday, pushing buttons, yes. We do have a secret room.
You're a Wisconsin fan, is that the...
I wish. I wish we had the button so we could have changed the Nebraska results.
She said she didn't have that many buttons.
Yeah, I ran out of buttons. Malfunctioned that day.
Exactly. All right. Any other questions?
They were controlling Alabama, Mississippi State.
Just for information, I was contacted, and they asked if they could go ahead and use this format rather than the manager, who was unavailable, and we said yes. So thank you for coming. Anybody in the audience who'd like to speak to this item? Next item, please.
All right, I'll call items 17 and 18. They're the application of Schmick's Market for a Class C liquor license at 1340 West O Street, and the related manager application of Cody Schmick. Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you really believe it to be?
I do.
Thank you.
Hi, guys. My name is Cody Schmick. We're new to town. This will be our second location, Schmick's Market. We bought the first one on Save Mart, the old Save Mart store on 11th and Cornhusker. This is number two. We are asking you guys for a liquor license. We did open about a week and a half ago. Things are going great. 1340 Westo is where we're at, the old Sunmart store, and we've renovated the whole thing, and I'd like to invite you guys out to see what we've done with it. We're pretty excited about it, and we're glad to be a part of Lincoln.
Questions? Carl.
Yes, thanks, Mr. Schmick. Appreciate, six months now you've been open in Belmont, something like that?
Yes, sir.
And so important to have a grocery store in that neighborhood as well as in the Westo neighborhood, so welcome to town and thanks for what you're doing.
We're excited to be here. Thanks.
Any other questions? And although you're new to Lincoln, you actually have a background? You came from your company?
Yeah, this will be our fourth store. Me and my brother, my dad, have opened. We have two other brothers in the mix. We have an uncle in the mix, some cousins. We're a true family business, so...
Who started where?
McCook, Nebraska.
Cool.
2005, Broken Bow, and 2010, and then the two Lincoln markets this year.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Anybody who'd like to speak to this item? Staff questions? Next item, please.
All right, I'll call items 19 and 20. They're the application of Saver Restaurant LLC, doing business as Ginger, for a Class I liquor license at 6055 Apples Way, and the related manager application of Yvette Cordell. Did you raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you really believe it to be?
I do.
Thank you.
My name's Yvette Cordell. I'm the general manager and a partner, and we are looking to open in January. We're a sushi bar, a Mongolian grill, and we have a lounge, and we are asking for our liquor license.
Questions? Okay. Thank you. Anybody who'd like to speak to this item? Staff questions? Next item, please.
All right, I'll call items 21, 22, and 26 together. They're the application of NHCLC, doing business as South Campus, for a Class CK liquor license at 101 North 14th Street, Suite 1, the related manager application of Robert Fitch, and the application of Wilmac LLC, doing business as Compadres, to delete an area measuring approximately 40 feet by 70 feet, and the outdoor area measuring approximately 22 feet by 30 feet from its Class CK liquor license at 101 North 14th Street, Suite 6, for a new description as the main floor approximately 70 feet by 48 feet. Would you gentlemen raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you really believe it to be?
I do.
Thank you.
I'm Heath McCumber, managing partner of Wilmac and managing partner of NHCLC. We're applying for our liquor license today, for NHCLC, and then the deletion for Wilmac.
This is Robert. And I'm Robert Fitch. I'll be the managing partner at the business.
Okay. Roy.
I've got in front of me a letter from the Lincoln Police Department outlining that Mr. Fitch has a number of violations that really call into question your judgment. I'm going to preface all this by saying this gives us no joy to sit here as a council and address these issues publicly, but I see six items that were put on your liquor license application, Mr. Fitch, three of which were since 2010, but 21 items which were not put on your liquor license application, five of them were from 2010. And these are violations and convictions that would call into question your judgment. And you were requested, I was recommended to you, that you'd file an amended liquor license application with the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission to include full disclosure of criminal and traffic violations. Has that been accomplished?
Yes. We have verification from Randy Seabird at the Liquor Commission. We sent in all of those missing ones. I mean, basically, I mean, we can show you the attempts that we did to try to find everything that are on our records. I can show you the state patrol background check, all the DMV. There's no... We actively worked with the Lincoln Police Department to make sure that we did find everything that was on our current record.
Apparently missed 21 items. That's a lot. I'm concerned.
Sure, sure. And I completely understand the concern, and it's, you know, we can address the actual items that are on there. There was no intent, and I think hopefully LPD and any of the state patrol officers that were investigating, you know, this license for, on behalf of the Liquor Control Commission, there was no at all any intent to not list any of them. We literally showed them the background checks that we ran with the state patrol, the DMV, all of the ones that we could run on our own without being law enforcement people, and those are the things that came up.
Yes, Mr. McCumber, you have owned and operated several establishments in downtown, and I think you're known and respected as doing a good job with your establishment, so appreciate that. Tell me about the South Campus and what kind of establishment you envision this to be.
You know, straight, cut, and narrow. I mean, we're in this business to sell alcohol. I mean, that's going to be our primary source of income. We do it and always, always do it in a controlled environment. We abide by every statute, and it's not the ones that, you know, are written by the Liquor Commission. We create our own policies and procedures. I've done that since, you know, 2010, when I've had my first liquor license to this one. We take it very seriously. I mean, that's the lifeblood of if you're just going to own a bar versus bar and restaurant, which, you know, I do do those things, too, but this one primarily, at least for the first year, is going to be primarily a bar lounge establishment. So without the liquor license, without protecting that, we can't do, you know, we can't make money. So that is primary focus, is, you know, us as managers portraying that to our employees who then implement those procedures and policies to, you know, our customers.
And you will continue to own and operate Compadres?
Yes. I don't do the everyday, today stuff, and they're more, I mean, they're a lot more food-oriented. I mean, their receipts are going to be, you know, 70, 80% food. I think this year, they're only, or we're only, oh, six months now into when we changed over that and opened a kitchen in there, so...
And these spaces were physically...
They were physically...
Connected, but they will no longer be.
Correct. There was a fire door in between the two that we would raise, and, you know, up and down, you know, depending on the event for night. That is going to be closed at all times. I'm probably going to lock it on both sides, once I figure out what the best way of actually doing that was. I've already checked with the fire department as far as, that's fine with them, as far as far as fire safety between that.
Thank you. For Mr. Fitch, again, this isn't the way we would prefer to do this, but it's what we got. So there were a couple of convictions that you did disclose. I wanted to ask you about two most recent ones for suspended license. Can you talk a little bit about?
Correct. Essentially, the ones that I did remember as well as the ones that I didn't or that I found on, on our research, they stemmed from several times that I got pulled over just maybe for speeding, something of that nature. And in the past, in the past, you know, I do have kids. In the past, I may have not been caught up on child support or I had not yet recognized the value of auto pay on my insurance. Essentially, all of that stuff is stemming from the insurance or the child support. At the, at this time, everything is auto pay with my auto insurance and, you know, direct deposit essential or direct pay from my checking account and my child support is 100% caught up.
Have, have you taken the manager training?
Yes. The hospitality, yes.
Any other questions?
There was one a little more recently. If you, if you look at all of those, most of them are from several years ago and I've, I've had that auto pay in place for all these years since then and never had a problem with it. There was one time where I switched banks and did not realize that the auto pay did not switch over and so then I got pulled over for not having my lights on. And of course, the insurance didn't work, you know.
Any, any other questions?
Questions of Officer Schaefer.
No, wait a minute. Before you get him up here, I do have a question or two or three. I, I get that some of them were a while back and they're hard to remember, but we remembered one in 2014, we remembered one in 2013. That's 20 months. We were, we forgot however, one, two, three, four, five that were also in that 20 months. So explain to me how we remember two, but we can't remember five, number one. Let's, I'll let you have that.
Well, I think if you look at some of those, I mean, they are all from these several times, you know, I want to estimate, I'm not looking at the sheet right now, but maybe five or six times pulling over, but there's, they count one as me not having my seatbelt on. They account one for me not having insurance. They count one for me having a suspended license. So essentially that's one time being pulled over, you know, and.
So the defense is I can't remember how many times I got cited for, each time I got stopped? Is that what you're saying? I mean, so you put it down as one, thinking one was enough even though there were two additional charges that may have been there at that time? And I ask because I look at suspended license, suspended license, one is on 130, 2013, 812, 2013, suspended, those are the ones you, you did remember. I get the no insurance one, all right. We violated a traffic signal on 12714. We had improper registration on 820. We violated the speed limit on 130. We straddled the lane line on 130. There's, there's, some of those are just the ones in 2013 and 2014. That doesn't go back. So I think in the interest of, of full disclosure, there might have been a little more than I forgot to turn in my insurance form.
Well, part of it, we did, you know, I went down to the police department and paid for a background check and gathered that information. Then I went down to the DMV and paid for a, a report there and gathered that information. I combined the two and that was what was on those. Then come to find out, that wasn't everything. Okay. Then I went and paid for another check at the State Patrol and added that. So, I mean, I was, I was doing research to, to figure out these, these dates. I mean, you, we're trying to figure out, we're trying to remember dates, you know, it's.
Yep.
I would like to mention, I mean, none of these are alcohol, alcohol related, not to say, not to, you know, not to say that it's not important, but.
Okay, go ahead, Officer Schaefer. Go ahead.
Could you tell us what, what you've discovered in the process that you went through? How did you find out about these things?
I have several sources that I can go to, to look up criminal and traffic histories and just compiled a list of all of the violations and noted that not all of the violations had been listed on the application. After speaking with the applicant several times after discovering this, tried to advise them that they needed to amend the application with the Liquor Commission. I don't think that this was necessarily a case where they're trying to hide anything. I think this, the bulk of the violations was more than they, they can remember, although I think, you know, I guess other than giving my opinion about that, I've been told by the applicants that they have filed amendments with the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission. I had made efforts through phone calls and emails to get a response from them prior to submitting the information to the council and I did not hear back from the Liquor Commission, so I don't have any verification that they had done that. And I'm kind of left with the information that I have. I, I do, you know, I understand part of their frustration and when they ask for that information online or from the police department that they're not being given a complete history and they're just putting down the information that they received and not adding to, you know, on each, the 21 or so violations, you know, they, I think Mr. Fitch had said that declared, you know, one driving under suspension, but at that same, you know, traffic stop, he would have had a speeding and no seatbelt and no, no insurance and those, over the course of those individual stops, the, the bulk of the violations kind of.
So when we, when, when a person comes in to the front desk of the police department and requests their driving record to do, to do an application for a liquor license, they're not getting the full story of what their history is?
I think they're getting a list of the convictions, but I believe that over a period of time, they, they drop off. So they, and it depends upon in which jurisdiction that they receive those violations. I think.
Where does the other information come from then?
From memory, I think.
Okay, but like the stuff that they're not disclosing on the, I mean, because we, we're seeing this more and more where we see not, did not disclose, anyway, we're using that information to make determinations on people's businesses. I'm wondering if there's a better way of getting that information because I think there is some certainty when you step in front of the police department or State Department of Roads that you're going to get all those violations. I mean, maybe not in every state, but I mean, we're, we're relying on this information and then coming, getting a letter saying that they, they didn't disclose. I mean, it's, that's kind of, that's kind of an important detail.
Yeah, and I, trying to compare a recent one to this one is a little, what I would consider a little bit different situation. I think the bulk of the violations on this one was just, there were so many of them that he just didn't remember all of them.
Sure.
And then trying to rely on the information from government agencies to refresh his memory may not be the best.
On the, let me ask this question. On the list of items that Mr. Fitch did not disclose, were those items on the list that he was given, where it was readily, readily for you to find then through the same mechanism that the police department has people come forward and request a driving record?
I don't, I, I use of course our computer database and can draw from that. And then I also can use the NCJIS, the, the state base. And then I have a, another one that I can use for national searches.
So if a person comes to the police department and requests that driving history, are they using the same tools that you do?
I, I, no, I don't believe that they are.
Okay, that, that's troubling.
So he did disclose five to six convictions, five of which were suspended license, starting in 2005 and the last one in 2014. And of the ones he didn't disclose, it looks like most of them are for other things, but there, then the suspended license from 2006 pops in. It seems like at least that one should have come up in what he was given. Do you know what he was given?
I do, yeah.
What was reported?
I, I believe what he was given was just showed the, the misdemeanor convictions and not the traffic infractions associated with that particular traffic stop. It only showed a portion, I think there was only four or five.
We'll give you a chance.
Okay. Yeah, well, as you say, the, the sheer volume here clearly would have been difficult to keep track of all these. That's problematic in itself, I think, independent of this reporting issue. And so there may be a reason why they didn't have access to all of the, the individual items, but the suspended license gives me a lot of concern here. I mean, 2014, 2013, 2011, 2005, 2005. It's just a pattern and I guess, let me make sure I understand here, suspended license, that would be, the person's license has been suspended. They are not legally able to drive.
That's correct.
And yet choose to drive anyway.
Yes.
Over and over and over again.
We don't know.
This was, okay. I mean, I consider that a pretty serious thing. I certainly have read Director Cassidy's blogs on this matter, that it's, it's a significant problem, that that's the ultimate, you know, way you enforce the, the point system after people have shown themselves to be irresponsible drivers, the licenses are suspended, but then the expectation is the person doesn't drive. If they do, then it doesn't, I mean, you don't ever take a bad driver off the road.
And I suspect that the reasons for suspensions on these were mostly related to either an administrative removal. Oftentimes if, if fines aren't paid or as Mr. Fitch had indicated, child support payments aren't made, then the DMV would do the administrative revocation of the license.
When you have a liquor license, you have a lot of rules you have to follow.
Yes, sir.
And the expectation is that, you know, you will know all those rules and you will abide by it and the excuses that you have in your personal life can't apply in dealing with a liquor license. Okay, go ahead. We'll give you a chance to rebut this. We beat you up pretty good here.
Sure, sure. And I understand, you know, I'd like to point out that, you know, these, when you say the number 21, it sounds like a lot. You know, one of these is a speeding ticket from when I was in college in 2001 at the University of Nebraska. You know, I'm just driving down the street a little bit faster than normal. I think most people probably have done that. I would also like to point out that I, I did own a, a business with a liquor license from, for about three years from 2003 to 2006. And I have, I have no, I had no trouble, troubles with that liquor license from 2003 to 2006 as far as, as far as, you know, over serving.
One of the things that you kind of look at when you're doing this is you say, well, some of these for Mr. McCumber, we're in 2001, 2000, 1999. All of us were younger once, we may have done that. The problem is, is that we have some that say 2014 and one is late as August of 2014. It's a little tough to say.
Mind if I ask what that was?
Suspended license, 812, 2014.
Okay, that would be the one where my, my auto pay, you know, I'm not trying to make excuses, but.
I think the point I'm trying to make is, is it's difficult to say I've turned my life around when the last one was only three months ago. So that's problematic, okay? Yeah, this is, this is 11 and that's to eight. So I'm challenged numerically, but I think eight to 11 is three. So, okay, go ahead, sir.
One quick thing, I mean, you know, I don't think we're here to defend like the number of violations or anything. I just want to make it clear that there was no intent to deceive.
Yeah.
There are definitely problems with that. I can show you the reports that we run and there was no intent to deceive at all in that area.
And I think you've, you've seen us kind of get away from that issue. We kind of understand now after hearing that that's not an issue, but had you had them all on there, the sheer weight of them would have been a little difficult.
Sure, and we would probably still be having the same conversation.
Exactly.
And Robert is, is part of the three-person management team. We're not, like, we're not turning the keys over to, to one certain person saying, hey, you're going to do everything. Absolutely not. We're all taking, you know, we all have a responsibility to protect, you know, our customers and our liquor license. So that's my, you know, last, I guess, push. It's like we're all going to have.
Given his driver's license, I would have used a different phrase than turning the keys over to him.
Bad choice of that.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody who'd like to speak to these, this item? Staff questions? I think we've answered those. Next item, please.
All right, I will note, Doug, that Sandy has been unable to reach Christine Jackson. None of our numbers seem to be viable.
Okay.
Item 23, manager application of Anthony Alwyn for Triple D LLC, doing business as Dino's East Side Grill at 2901 South 84th Street.
At least Anthony still wants to come up here after that. It's okay, it's okay. Put your hand up, here we go.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you really believe it to be? Thank you. Just give your name and address.
Okay, my name's Tony Alwyn. It's a nickname for Anthony. 6201 South 53rd Street, apartment 10 in Lincoln, Nebraska. The executive manager of Dino's East Side Grill on 84th and Van Dorn. We're here to renew our liquor license.
Okay, any questions? Want to give us a little commercial about Dino's?
Sure, you want a great food and good fun?
And liquor.
And liquor too, yeah.
That's a rhetorical question, don't answer that. Now, is, is Dino's under new ownership? Same ownership, just changed manager?
Same ownership, new management, yeah.
Very well, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody who'd like to speak this item? Staff questions? Next item, please.
I'll call item 24, manager application of Spencer Perry for Star City Hockey LLC, doing business as Lincoln Stars Hockey at 1800 State Fair Park Drive. Did you raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you really, really believe it to be?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Spencer Perry, 2901 Southwest 78th Street, Lincoln 68532.
Questions? This is, this is to have alcohol at Stars games in the arena?
Correct.
Okay. We'll give you the same chance. You want a little, little chance to talk about the Stars you can? Never mind.
19th season, so we, we're doing something, okay?
Got you.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody who'd like to speak to this item? Next item, please.
All right, I'll call item 25, application of Kurt and Christine Contour, doing business as 501 Bar and Grill for the addition of a catering license to their Class C liquor license at 501 West A Street Suite 104. Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you really believe it to be?
I do.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Kurt Contour. My wife and I, Chris, own the 501 Bar and Grill at 501 West A Street and we're just making an application to extend our Class C liquor license to a catering license.
Okay. Any questions? Okay, want to tell us a little bit about 501?
We, my wife and I have owned it for the last year. We're more of a neighborhood sports bar. We have entertainment on the weekends and various other things, karaoke and taco night and wing night and that stuff during the week.
Got you.
So.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Question, Dr.? Yeah, I'm sorry.
Where, where will you be catering? What, what do you anticipate?
The main reason for the catering license is so we can have some outside venues because right now if I want to do a, we do a big, our, our biggest one is Hogs for Dogs. It's a fundraiser for dogs for the blind. We do that in the summer and I have to apply for a special permit every year for it and pay an extra cost, but if I get the catering license, that's included in that. I just have to, I have to turn in my paperwork to do it, but I don't have to pay the extra, the extra amount. And we'd like to do more, more of that outside if we could.
You're making the clerk's life easier too.
Yes, hopefully.
Same paperwork.
Just less money for me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody who'd like to speak to this item? Staff questions? Next item, please.
All right, I'll call item 27, application of ZipLine Brewing for a special designated license to cover an area measuring approximately 70 feet by 72 feet at 2100 Magnum Circle on November 28th from 12:00 PM to 9:00 PM. Hi, no oath. No oath. You're okay. Just give your name and address.
Marcus Powers here on behalf of ZipLine Brewing Company at 2100 Magnum Circle here in Lincoln. Apologies, I come to you more as a brewer. Today I'm stepping in for my partner who is supposed to be here in a suit and tie. It's cold at the brewery. We're having our second anniversary party next Friday after, after Thanksgiving. So we were following an application to use kind of basically a small area out in front of our brewery to be able to access food trucks that are parked there. Gives our patients an opportunity to ease of walking in and out of our facility. We've done a few events like this and put up fencing and it's, works really well.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody who'd like to speak to this item? Staff questions? Next item, please.
That concludes our hearing on liquors. We can move to public hearing organs, a second reading.
But wait, we need to vote.
We got to vote on the liquor licenses first.
I'd like to move delay of item 14 again and approval of items 15 through 20 and items 23 through 27.
Putting 26?
21, 22, and 26 are related.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
We'll have a separate motion to deal with items 21 and 22.
And 26 is not related to, how is it related to 21, 22?
Same manager.
Same owner.
So should it be held up?
No.
No? Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Carl? Discussion, Carl? I mean Jonathan. So you, this motion includes delaying 14?
Yes, it does.
And we already delayed once and we just had calls? I don't know.
I did get, just get a message from Sandy that we are getting a new application for new owners of Fuzzy Taco Shop. So that could be why she did not show up.
So should we make a new, what, okay, I'll move that we deny 14 and then Roy can amend his motion.
Well, how about we just go where we are and then we'll come back to 14?
Wow. Roy, do you want to just remove 14 from your motion?
I'll remove 14 from the motion.
Okay. There we go.
So this is for everything but 21 and 22 and 14?
Correct.
Okay.
Discussion? Call her up.
Christensen?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero.
I'd like to move a restriction on, uh, items twenty-one and twenty-two. Um, it's a, it's a challenging one. Uh, again, I have a lot of respect for Mr. McCumber and what, what he's done with, with other establishments, and, and really have a lot of confidence in that, in, in his abilities to, to run this, this facility. Um...
Carl, before you-
Yes.
Uh, you moved the motion to amend, do you want to move the items?
Twenty-one and twenty-two.
Twenty-one and twenty-two, do you want-
You're moving for approval with certain conditions?
Yes.
Okay, very good.
Yes. Um, so that's, in, in looking through the, the record of Mr. Fitch, I, he explained some things, um, didn't say some things, uh, mentioned that he had a speeding ticket, uh, when he was in college. Didn't mention it was sixteen to twenty miles an hour over the limit. Didn't mention three years later, there was one sixteen to twenty miles over the limit in a school zone. Um, so I, so I guess I'm, you know, that, that one's ten years ago. So, you know, hopefully things have, have improved. Uh, but you gotta prove it, is my feeling. And, uh, so I, I would like a restriction of, uh, of one year with no, no violations of the law, or no violations of the liquor laws concerning the operations of this facility.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Roy. Discussion? And no violations of the law, do we ever put any additional, like, city or state, I mean, is that, I guess, is our law department satisfied that that, that wording is acceptable? No violations of the law?
One-year restriction or what? On, on whom, or what?
Just don't make it-
Okay.
Driving and liquor.
Just make it driving and liquor. Just driving and liquor violations? Is that sufficiently sus- specific? On, oh, uh, excuse me, on Mr. Fitch? Yes. As the manager? Yes.
Still comfortable with that?
With no driving violations or liquor violations of one year?
Correct. Jonathan? Yeah. Um, I mean, the difficulty I have is with the suspended license violations. Those are fairly recent, and you have to get pulled over before you will be cited for that. So, again, whatever is happening here is very unusual, it seems to me. I mean, we normally don't make a big deal about driving violations when it comes to looking at liquor permits. Just the sheer weight of these is so great, and I think that's the most serious violation. After you've done all these other things and your license has been taken away, even if it's for non-payment of child support or some other administrative reason, once you've been cited for that, you know you don't have a valid license. And yet, you know, months later, you're out on the road and you get pulled over again. I mean, I can't understand how that's possible, quite frankly. That's, and so I, I view the suspended license thing as serious enough that I'm not sure that, I think it perhaps should disqualify someone from having a liquor license. That many suspended license. I don't see any excuse. The non-payment of insurance again because the auto pay didn't work or some, it doesn't work for me, so...
I have a comment. I, I'd like to say, I understand those concerns and share those. I am willing to vote for this, though, based on the reputation of Mr. McCumber. He has a good reputation in the city, and, uh, based on that, I'm willing to support this with the restrictions.
Okay. Anybody else?
What's, what about the possibility of dividing the, the liquor resolution, uh, from the manager application? Right now, we have them together.
You, you could do that. You could approve the liquor license and deny the manager.
I think I'm more inclined to go with an arrangement like that.
Then vote against this, and we'll go back up with that, if that's what you'd like to do.
Okay.
Any other question? Any other discussion? Um, Mr. McCumber, you understand that if they, if we vote for this and it goes forward, there's no guarantee that the liquor, the state liquor commission will approve it. What if they do? The onus of this falls directly on you. You brought the gentleman in to be your, uh, manager, so you're responsible. Okay, color roll.
Christensen?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
No.
Motion carried, four to two.
Okay, next item, please.
Okay, that would be item fourteen.
Oh.
Oh, item is, the number, item fourteen is the next item? Moved to withdraw.
Need to dispense with.
Oh, uh, moved to withdraw item fourteen from our agenda.
Okay.
I mean, do we feel confident enough that that's, based on our feedback here, that that's the appropriate action?
I would recommend either withdrawal or denial, because she was informed numerous times she needed to come in, and-
Let me ask, let me ask this question. Does denial make it so that they're not able to do anything moving forward?
No.
That means it would automatically go to the State Liquor Control Commission? Are they coming, okay, so are they coming forward with a new application? That's our understanding?
Sandy said we received a new application today. I don't know if she's on it or not.
Okay, so let's remove this one since we received a new one.
Can I ask a question for clarification? Is there a cost implication if they have paid for this application and we remove this? Do they have to pay again, or what, what are the financial implications of our decision?
If they need, do need a new manager in the interim, they would have to pay to apply again.
Done. Well, if we withdraw this, then it's as though we haven't taken any action. And if it were to go forward for some reason, then it would be as though we took no action, therefore we gave tacit approval. And I don't think that's what we want to do.
Yeah, that's a good point.
And so, it seems like we should deny, or just leave it another week if we're not against a deadline.
Or you can, no, on manager, we're, we don't have a deadline.
Oh, okay.
So you could delay it another week.
I guess I'd, just out of caution here, delaying would avoid any mistake here, and then we'll find out for sure what's happening next week.
Put it on the pending list.
Yeah, I know you like that.
I love it. It's my favorite.
Wouldn't be, just one more week delay to see, to get feedback for sure about what new forms have been filled out.
Draw my motion and wait for another motion. Yes.
Does anybody know what we're gonna do? I will move, okay, well, you want more advice? Wait.
I spoke with her on Thursday at the, uh, management training. She was, um, I thought she was going to show up today, but ultimately she's under the impression that because they're under new ownership and have submitted a new application with her as the manager on this new application, um, she didn't think that she had to be here today.
What would you recommend? That we deny, or that we delay?
Just delay. I'll, I'll give her a call first thing tomorrow.
Okay, I move that we delay action on this until next-
All of us upon her that-
Second.
She needs to be.
And we'll get an explanation.
Yeah.
Okay, second by Roy. Discussion. Color roll.
Christensen?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. All right, public hearing ordinance's second reading and related resolutions. I'll call items twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and thirty together. They are authorizing the issuance of tax allocation bonds with a total not to exceed five-hundred-thirty-three thousand, three-hundred-fifty-four dollars for the City of Lincoln Schwartz Paper Building Redevelopment Project, approving the Schwartz Paper Building Redevelopment Agreement between the City and CB Link LLC and Schwartz Paper Company relating to the redevelopment of property generally located at seven-fourty-seven O Street for commercial and residential space, and amending the fiscal year thirteen-fourteen CIP to authorize and appropriate five-hundred-thirty-three thousand, three-hundred-fifty-four dollars in TIF funds for the Schwartz Paper Building Redevelopment Project on property generally located at seven-fourty-seven O Street.
Members of the City Council, David Landis, Urban Development Department, we are the applicant in this case. Uh, I'll be speaking first, and then Lauren Wismer will be talking about the, uh, bond implications of this project. This is the Schwartz, Schwartz Paper Company building. It's right under, right south of the Harris Overpass. Looks like this. Punch a particular button, let's hope that's the one. Uh, it should look very familiar. The one, the, the perspective I have of this building most often is that since it's a functioning industrial use, there are semis that park into this dock, and the city has done a cutout on the far side of the street so that you can drive around the semi on your way down to the historic Haymarket. That's what happens when you get an older industrial use and in a, a vibrant growing, uh, area like the, the Haymarket. There's sort of a rough fit between the two. Um, it's worked sufficiently well for a fine employer and a very good company, but they, uh, would like to be in another location. It'll serve their interests and needs better. And, uh, our developer is seeing to it that they find that new location and is constructing an appropriate spot for them at another location, thereby freeing this building. And the much more appropriate use for our two-thousand-five downtown master plan, our Lincoln, uh, downtown development plan, our, 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 uh, twenty-twelve master plan update, is that this move into commercial and residential, which is what this project is. It depends on how, how it ultimately shakes out. Either the basement and the first floor, about nine-thousand square feet, will be for commercial space, and then there'll be three floors of residential, about eighteen units. Or the basement, first floor, and second floor will be commercial. That'll be about fifteen-thousand-six-hundred square feet, and the top two floors will be residential, about twelve units. Either way, it'll be much more consistent with our long-term vision for this area and the new South Haymarket plan that our planning department has done as well. So, Schwartz finds the right home. This building gets, uh, redone in a much better way, and I think the Haymarket is well-served by what happens. This is a small add-on building, and in fact, if you were to look at it today, not in this form, but in this form, you might recognize this little add-on building, which will come down. It'll be replaced by new structure. That new structure will be consistent with historical norms for the area. Uh, in fact, there will be historic preservation tax credits with this project, so that it has the flavor and integrity of the Haymarket area. A good deal of the money that will be spent of the four-point-seven million dollars that the developer will be expending, um, will be for facade, uh, and there'll be some tuck pointing, um, the facade enhancement is, is a good deal of the use that we would expect that the five-hundred-and-thirty-three thousand dollars of TIF would be spent for. Um, there are other, there are about seven-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars of TIF uses that we can identify in the building. There's five-hundred-and-thirty-three thousand dollars of expected TIF revenue. That's very common. Developers oftentimes have many more uses for TIF than what we have TIF funds for. They, they recite those so that in the event there's any savings and uniquely efficient, uh, first priorities, that they will be able to use the entire resources. I think one of the things that we want to take into account about the value of this kind of change is what it can do for the rest of the Haymarket when the area that is now that loading dock and used by Schwartz becomes angled parking. And in fact, that cutout on the other side of the street, that can become angled parking. And below the alleyway, which is now just flush with the corner, we'll be able to do resources for angled parking on this side and quite possibly on the other. That would be about thirty-six stalls of parking in the Haymarket area, and I'm gonna guess you've heard about parking in the Haymarket area. This would be a chance to do something positive about that. I would just put in a plug, because I think we're allowed to make plugs on occasion.
Oh, absolutely.
Thank you. We would expect to put parking meters in them and charge for that parking as well.
It's the slogan.
The harmony that occurs when you get this property into the appropriate uses, it then fits into the fabric. The dock that's there now, which is used by Schwartz Paper, will become part of the pedestrian public use, and it becomes the dock like the docks in fr- in front of Buzzard Billy's, or the Granger Building in which that is there, and we'll be also, we'll be able to have a sidewalk, which does not now exist if you were to walk that street. Because it's an industrial use, people who are pedestrians walk in the street to get further south. Now we'll have a sidewalk. All of that is occasioned by this agreement that we've negotiated with the developer. We wish them well, because we think it's a significant improvement for the South Haymarket. Questions?
Just quick question. How many new residential units did you say that you expect?
It depends on how much of it becomes commercial. If it's the top three floors, we think it's about eighteen. We think if it's the top two floors, it's about twelve.
Any other questions? Thank you. Lauren?
Good afternoon, Lauren Wismer, Gilmore and Bell, um, members of the council. You were provided with a substitute ordinance previously, and what Teresa will be giving you are the changes that have been made from the ordinance that was distributed to you initially. Uh, I would like to say that's the end of it, but, uh, we have kind of a, a moving target in this case, and there are some additional amendments that need to be made, and I have marked pages for that as well. And I've been working, Tim can tell us about what we need to do in order to make the amendments. These are the, the additional changes that, that, uh, need to be made. Primarily, it's a, a proper identification of all the, the different uses that are, the TIF proceeds are going to be used for. That has been expanding as, as we've gone along, uh, just a minor correction to, uh, include some additional resolutions that approve the Lincoln Center Redevelopment Plan. Um, and that, I think, constitutes the, the changes. Otherwise, it's, uh, pretty much, uh, the tax increment financing ordinance that you've come to expect. Uh, and I will be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Questions? Lauren, these will be owner purchase?
Uh, that's my understanding.
Okay. Somebody can verify that? Okay. We'll just, are you coming up, Hallie?
Any questions?
Thank you very much.
Yes, it will be developer purchased.
Okay, thank you very much.
Anybody else who'd like to speak this item?
Good afternoon, my name's Kent Seacrest, representing CB Link LLC. Craig Geese, the leading principal, has, cannot be in attendance today. The other part of our larger team effort has been Schwartz Paper Company. This ninety-seven-year-old, uh, business has been successfully operating in the Haymarket, but it's been challenging as Haymarket has changed. More importantly, we are taking the historical building, which was built in eighteen-eighty-four, now a hundred-and-thirty years, and rehabbing it back to some real grandeur that it used to have many, many years ago, as well as functionality for office and residential as we go. So it's a real win-win, as David Landis pointed out to you, uh, both from Schwartz Papers' point of view, as well as the community's better circulation of people and vehicles in the Haymarket area. It also creates what I call really good first impression as we go south, and as you know, there's a new down, Haymarket South, uh, redevelopment plan that the planning department's been working on, and will come forward someday. Uh, we are optimistic that that will be very successful. We are talking four-point-two million dollars of private improvements, along with the five-hundred-and-thirty-four thousand dollars of the TIF. There's actually another two-hundred-and-twenty-six thousand dollars of public improvements that the redevelopers are gonna pay for, because there just isn't enough TIF, and we need to get these other public improvements done to create the connect, the nexus that David described to you. Uh, we've been able to say all the terms and conditions distinctly in a hundred-and-five pages, and we would stand in front of you to answer any questions. More importantly, we want to thank the mayor, David Landis, Dallas, Hallie, Tim C. for a lot of hard work. Been very successful process, though, uh, because everybody's seen the merits of this one, and we've had virtually no disagreements. So with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Carl? Yes, uh, thanks, Mr. Seacrest, for being here. Can you talk a little bit about the, the residential side of it, and, and who potentially could be, uh, would they be owned, or rentals, or what, what?
Uh, because we're going for historic tax credits, we cannot, believe it or not, sell these to end users. They have to be for rent. If we're going for the federal historic tax credits, which we need to do in order to make the economics of the project go forward. However, this is not geared for student housing. This is not one of those, each unit will have four beds for lease. This is, um, for what I call the rest of the residential market that wants to come and enjoy the amenities of the downtown and greater Haymarket area.
Thank you. Thank you.
Could you outline some of the enhancements that will be done on the private side you mentioned, since you weren't able to do it all with TIF, and what some of those enhancements would be?
The private enhancements or the public enhancements?
Right, the public enhancements done by the private developer.
Okay. We are using the TIF primarily for facade historic renovation. You saw pictures, we're actually putting back windows that got bricked up, and so we're real excited to get the building to look like it originally did look. As far as, we might have enough TIF to fill in the vault, and that's that empty space that you often see in public right-of-way underneath the dock. After that, we're out of TIF, and so the developer will be primarily concentrating on interior demolition, and I don't want to say interior, building the Block 52, public enhancements. LAS is next door, the alley needs work, LAS next door needs some beautification, so we're helping fund those activities. And then the dock and the canopy that'll go over the dock will be privately funded, even though they're public in the city's right-of-way.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else who'd like to speak to this item?
My name's Richard Hoverson, and I'm going to tell you about TIF. Well, not you, but maybe some of our listeners at home down here in the office who maybe have forgot what TIF was originally proclaimed to me. Originally, it was rehabilitate blighted property, there's rundown warehouses, whatever, and has led to such situations, having cornfields being blighted, because unless it's blighted, you can't have TIF. So it doesn't matter what shape the building is in, you, the city council, call it blighted. And also, TIF supposedly, they said, well, after they went through that route, they said it's supposed to be used for projects that wouldn't happen except for TIF. There's borderline projects that are good for the community, but if you don't get TIF, it's not going to happen, because TIF is giving away taxpayer money. You say, yeah, we get it back in 15 years. But any economist, a dollar today is worth more than a dollar in 15 years. Now they'll go into some of the reason that he mentioned, one of the priorities they have using this TIF is for $100,000 for insurance costs. Now, if I buy a new car, close the deal, or about ready to close the deal, said, hey, by the way, I want you to pay insurance for the first few years. Car dealer, see, you're crazy. But I guess in this case, they want to use the TIF, the tax TIF money to pay for their own insurance. And evidently, according to the papers, they, approximately $4,700 administration fee for TIF. And again, they want to use the TIF to pay for the TIF. I can go through some others, that $20,000 for filling the vault beneath this, this is beneath the street. I don't know, it's been there 97 years. Again, I don't know why the taxpayers should pay for filling that. And again, this is, well, I won't go around, but basically, in other words, they all need TIF, this project is going to go off with or without TIF. And again, while I don't disagree with the, again, some of the uses they have is for the dock and camping enchant, I don't disagree with that for facade enhancements, but again, I think that should come out of developers' pocket. Maybe the LAS part and alley improvements, maybe we could pay for that, you know, the TIF. But again, I think, yeah, I don't think TIF is needed in this part. We, it's going to go with or without. That's basically my take.
Questions? Thank you. Anybody else who'd like to speak to this item? Staff questions? Mr. Seacrest, anybody who'd like to speak rebuttal to that?
I just want the record to be clear, $100,000 is not being spent on insurance. This is a comedy of errors. If you look at the redevelopment agreement, it's $10,000 for issuance expenses to pay for tax opinions and issuance costs. Our wonderful Lincoln Journal said $10,000 of insurance instead of issuance costs, and this gentleman apparently reads the paper to be $10,000 is now $100,000. So bottom line is it's $10,000 of issuance costs.
Next item, please.
Next would be item 31, Comp Plan Conformance 14002, approving an amendment to the Antelope Valley Redevelopment Plan to add the 18th and P multi-family redevelopment project for three residential buildings and a multi-story parking garage facility on property generally located in the blocks bounded by 17th Street, Antelope Valley Parkway, O Street, and Q
Members of the city council, David Landis, the applicant in this case on behalf of the urban development department. This is a project that has been seen by our planning commission and reported out, I believe 8O unanimously as consistent with the downtown plan. This is that place in which you get to see, because this is an amendment to the downtown redevelopment plan, the idea. We're working on the idea, we're working on the agreement, but this is the point at which you get to say, is this consistent with where the downtown plan wants to go, and is this a project that we want to pursue? We do that in deciding whether or not it's consistent with our planning documents, and it's an appropriate project to have that we are working towards. I can show you, for example, the location. I can show you some site plans, and I can show you a rendering, but these are not final in the sense that this is the element of a final agreement, but it is the project that we're working on for which we are looking for a signal today. The area is here in Antelope Valley. Here is Antelope Valley Parkway. Here is O Street. Here's P Street, and here's Q Street. There are actually four facilities that constitute this project. I'm not sure how much, two here and two here. This is a garage fronted by residential units, and the rest are essentially residential units as well. So it's significant. This is, in fact, an investment of well over $40 million. It generates about $7 million in TIF we expect as we continue to work on this. And what's currently in these locations are several surface parking lots, some grassy area, an auto lot, and a small building with like a one-story grocery store, as I recall. That totals amount of valuation currently, the valuation of all of that land is about $5 million. When we're done with this, the valuation of that land should be about $35 million. It will also not only replace surface parking with six stories of parking. It makes parking much more dense. It takes care of the parking needs of the Dutoe Building. It takes care of the parking needs of this facility, and we're in B4. In B4, there is no parking obligations of the developer or the owner to provide parking for their customers. When they build, they expect the city to provide that. In this case, the developer will provide their own parking, which is expensive, difficult to do, and valuable in this case. When they do that, they will also, by the way, make available on these streets what we guess to be someplace between 60 and 70 parking stalls that do not now exist on the streets that I've described. This is not a final picture, but this is not inconsistent with their historical pattern and what they expect. And as we make specific agreements back and forth, we'll be talking about energy efficiency and facades and the like. It's consistent with the downtown master plan in that it, the plan calls for this to be the common center for Lincoln and a catalyst for future growth, and this growth is well over $40 million. By the way, if this third project is approved, the Antelope Valley investment in the last three years, roughly, will be about $130 million of investment in Antelope Valley, something that people who supported Antelope Valley said would happen and is coming true. Among the other downtown goals are an attractive place to live, and by the way, this would be housing with about 600 beds, 182 units. We would expect student housing at this location. It's important to the economic future of the community that the downtown is the home to the University of Nebraska. We would expect these to be University of Nebraska students for the most part. By the way, when you do this kind of housing, it frees up the university from doing publicly-financed dormitories, the last of which cost $80 million and would have provided about the same amount of housing. In this case, it'll be done in the private sector. This is residential infill. It is a densification and a moving up of the city, which is what you want in city designs, and is, as I said, the planning commission's oversight agreeing with us that this is consistent with the downtown and the city's comprehensive plan. Can I answer any questions? Done for you.
These buildings are in the vicinity of the fire station, number one. Can you tell me what, if any, discussions took place with the fire department? Will all of this additional activity affect in any way their operations, or?
First, I'm going to say that I haven't heard of anything, but I'm going to check whether or not this is something that we've in fact wound up having any conversation with the fire department. Can you be able to report on that? Tom, you want, Tom, would you come up, please, if you're going to speak?
Sure.
Thank you.
Tom, Houston 233 South 13th, Sweet 1900, on behalf of the developer, Aspen Heights. The location of the park, existing fire station at 18th and Q, I believe it's right there.
Can you print it on, please?
It's coming.
There you go. Thank you.
That was certainly a factor in the design and orientation of the structures, the four structures that are being proposed as a part of this project. There were some preliminary discussions, and that's all it was. It was a question was asked whether or not the city would be interested in selling that fire station. We determined that was probably a long-term question that required a long-term answer, more time than we had, but we certainly tried to design around the effects that not only this project would have on the fire station, but the fire station would have on the project. So it certainly was taken into consideration.
Okay. And the parking, you have this parking garage that serves all of these buildings. How do people access the garage? Do they just go outdoors and over to the parking garage? So there are no other plans, even future plans for connectivity?
One of the challenges with downtown assembly of sites is, and you know, there's four separate sites here, and it is a challenge. I mean, it's a real challenge to assemble four different sites, because you pull one string and it pulls somewhere else within the web that we're trying to weave here. But, but one thing that we're certain of is that the parking needs of university students is much different than the parking needs of daytime commuters. They leave their car in the garage for a week at a time, so I guess that's less of a concern. One of the things that we tried to do in the design of this project was avoid any vacation of right-of-way because of really the city's preference that we don't vacate right-of-way. We looked at it vacating some alleys and really connecting the buildings, building one and two, for example, but we determined, no, it would be better off not doing that because of some of the design challenges it would have created, and because the neighbors to the east of this, or excuse me, to the west of the facility didn't really have an interest in vacating the alley. So we just tried to design around that. But, but yes, there is no direct connectivity between each of the structures and the parking garage, nor does there need to be, I believe.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
No question. Will the parking, the multi-story parking garage simply be for the residents of these buildings exclusively, or will it also have public access?
The good thing about this project is that my client's been working closely with the owner of the Dutoe Building, and the Dutoe Building is underparked right now. They have the surface parking lot to their north, but they need additional parking to really fully utilize their building, and the parking garage being designed will contain 593 parking stalls, 200 of which will be devoted exclusively and owned by the owner of the Dutoe Building, which is AV LLC. I assume that's an acronym for Antelope Valley LLC, but it's AV LLC is the owner of that north parking lot, north of the Dutoe Building. So they'll be getting 200 parking stalls so they can fully lease their building, which is a good additional benefit of this project.
Other questions?
No public parking, though.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody who'd like to speak to this item?
Believe it or not, I have a few additional comments. Today, I do introduce you to Tony Kerp, who's the executive vice president of Aspen Heights, and he's with me to answer any questions that you may have. Just a couple of things that I wanted to mention. I think the staff report prepared by the planning department does a fine job of really analyzing comprehensive plan and the downtown redevelopment plan. A couple of things caught my eye. The downtown plan, I did serve on the review committee of the comprehensive plan, and it really envisioned 3,000 dwelling units in downtown Lincoln by the year 2040. Well, we're ahead of that schedule, I think. I think with the addition of this project, there's been significant investment in downtown Lincoln. The comprehensive plan does focus on a corridor for university-oriented housing for not only students, faculty, and staff, and I think this project is certainly consistent with that, that proposal. This project will increase the pedestrian and bicycle access to the university and really bring more students that otherwise are living on North 27th Street apartment projects or elsewhere in the perimeter back down to campus. And as I mentioned, it will continue the existing investment that has been occurring in the downtown area, as Director Landis said, and my client would love to have this project cost approximately $40 million, because on paper, it's probably closer to $50 million, the total cost of the project upon completion. Just a couple of things I wanted to mention about Aspen Heights, they're located in Austin, Texas, and Tony was originally from Kansas City, so he has seen five-degree temperature before, but Aspen Heights is a developer of student housing, has done so across the country. They're currently owning, existing ownership of 13 projects around the country consisting over approximately 9100 beds. Their typical model is maybe even more suburban cotties type of model, but they're getting more into the urban setting, the vertical high-rise type of development with additional projects coming online. Aspen Heights is in it for the long term. They develop and hold for their own ownership. They don't, they don't develop and sell, so they have their own private management, property management division of the company to really protect the investment they make in the different communities across the country. I think you, there's a couple of things I did want to mention about the site plan that should be up on the overhead. We had the time, so we spent several months working with the urban design committee, the project architects based in Dallas. We had talked to, first met with urban design back in September, and they made some specific suggestions. Originally, building number one up in this location was oriented to the south, so rather than an N, we turned it into a U, so the courtyard is really oriented to Q Street. Likewise, building number three was originally oriented so that the courtyard was facing the alleyway, which we thought was the intent and direction under the downtown design standards, but with the assistance and prodding of Ed Zimmer, who's very good at that, and the request of the urban design committee, we really flipped, inverted that, made it into the orientation towards P Street, which I think is much better, you see a lot more activity. Building number three is the principal building, the prime building of the project, where the leasing office and fitness center, where it'll be at the street level and show the activity that is desired from the downtown design standard. The, I guess the other thing that, when we worked with the urban design committee through the October meeting and again the November meeting, we got into detail such as the parking garage will have some exterior lighting and worked with them and showing some light studies. And also, we conducted an interior light study to look at the interior lighting within the parking garages to prevent extrusion or any direct impact, adverse impact of the interior lighting, and the urban design committee had some very good ideas on shielding that to make sure there's no, any adverse impact. The liner building on the north side of the parking garage will be really seven individual townhomes, and that's probably more appropriate for faculty, or it will be open to anybody, but it's a little different housing type than the others, but it's really designed to be that liner building, protect the P Street corridor from the parking garage itself. I guess the other thing I would add is that our current plan is to have a redevelopment agreement for you for introduction soon, and my client would like to be in a position where we can have a public hearing on December 8th, and then a third reading and action on December 15th, your last meeting of the year. One last thing I did want to mention is, I get this question frequently, because I've worked on several of these projects in Lincoln, is I get asked the question, what is the demand for student housing in Lincoln? And I'm not sure I really know, but I can tell you this, the numbers that my client has looked at really show that there's been a lot of addition, but still, there's a housing gap based upon the needs of the university students, the university, the students attending University of Nebraska, and really what is being provided. If you look at the original student population in 2010, there was a gap of about 1,700 beds that were required for university students. The university brought online the Knoll Housing Center that added 565 beds. There was no additional beds added in 2011, or excuse me, yeah, 2011. In 2012, the student population was 24,200 students. And at that time, the Park House at 13th and Q came online that added 192 beds. But even with that addition, there was a gap of approximately 1,150 beds within the city of Lincoln. In 2013, the student population had increased to 24,445 students, and the new units brought online were 193 beds at the canopy lofts down across from Pinnacle Bank Arena. And the University of Nebraska had their first phase of housing that added 517 beds, so there's a total addition of 710 beds for the University of Nebraska. There was still a gap of approximately 690 beds that were not being met. And then with 2014 numbers, the fall enrollment in University of Nebraska was 25,000 students. And this fall, the 50-50 project across the street north at 18th and Q was added, that added 485 units to the inventory. And the university added the second phase of the resident hall for another 517 beds. The university was scheduled to demolish a couple dormitory rooms, or dormitories, I think the Cathar pound complex. I think, I don't think they took everything down, but I think they're partially using those buildings, but there was still a gap of about 1,000 beds based upon the demand. And then if, so what my client does is look at a tenure window to really to try to determine what the housing needs are and whether it's being met. If the university is successful, and I understand the chancellor is determined to make sure that we'll be successful, that student enrollment does grow to 30,000 students with the addition of the new, let's see, it's the new addition of Business Administration College Building. I think the future is very bright for the university, and that's why Lincoln is very prominent in a lot of the eyes of student housing developers around the country. And so my client's very high and bullish on the Lincoln market and what can be done here. And this corridor of 18th and Q is really the feeder area for the university students. It really enables them to access university as a pedestrian or with bicycle. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions? Carl.
Yes, thanks, Mr. Houston. So I'd looked at the Aspen Heights website to see the kinds of projects they're involved in around the country, and there are many of them, and they look really interesting. But I must not have been looking at the right ones because what I was looking at was mostly suburban-looking, so kinds of facilities. I didn't see the sorts of facilities that you brought before. So where would I look? What communities are those kinds of facilities?
Well, and Mr. Kerp probably can address that better, but as I mentioned, they really have two product types, one of which is the cottage style, which is more of an urban approach, or excuse me, suburban urban approach, and then the more downtown urban high-rise is something they're really getting into, but it's something they're trying to focus on now with a lot of these urban areas.
Okay.
Members of the council, Tony Kerp. I'm with Aspen Heights, 1301 South Capitol of Texas Highway. I appreciate your time this evening. The company was founded in 2006, and really the niche that we went after was what you saw on the website, was we basically come in and buy anywhere from 20 to 50 acres and built what looks like a single-family subdivision, except it was dedicated to student housing. And it's been an extremely successful model for us. What we figured out a couple of years ago was that the ability to find 20 to 50 acres next to a University of Nebraska was getting few and far between. So we brought in a team, including myself and some construction people, to really focus on more walkable sites like this site immediately adjacent to campus. So at this point, we've opened two garden-style developments, one in San Marcos, Texas, which I take it is not on the website yet, so I need to rectify that.
I just didn't look at that one, okay.
And also one in Charlotte, North Carolina. Those are both more high-dense products.
Okay.
And then this will be one of the first three forays into a deal with actual structured parking immediately adjacent to campus for us.
Okay, great. And, well, thanks for being here. And the, as Mr. Houston mentioned, there have been several who've come before you, I guess, in the community, and with, I think, some mixed results in terms of especially management of the community. So as you've witnessed, we're a community concerned about how alcohol behavior and those kinds of issues. So what does Aspen Heights do with regard to managing the community?
We have a very strong management team that focuses specifically on that. It's a huge issue for us as well. We currently have 9,000 beds in 13 projects, so especially this, you know, the last couple of months, time of the year is always interesting when you first open the doors to the new round of people. But we're very proactive. We work with universities, we work with the local cities, and we work with the police department if necessary to put together plans to address any issues that might come up. You know, we find that these are really a subset of the university, and we're not anticipating any sort of, that sort of issue that has happened in the past at different universities, and we're not anticipating that here.
Do you have management, staff, or and/or security on location?
We do have management on location, and then all the buildings are secured, so it's key fob entrance only, as well as the parking garage.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
I just wanted to say thank you for the work with the Urban Design Committee. I know you went back twice, and the feedback in the reports and from those committee members was that you really listened to the sensitivities of the Lincoln environment, which you're not a part of until this comes forward. You will be soon, so thank you for listening to their input.
I am going to put Tony on the spot and ask him to repeat something he told me earlier today about what really attracted Aspen Heights to Lincoln, because it's something I think it's beneficial for you to hear.
Yeah, it's, you know, we do all the numbers, and we have a whole team of people that track stuff back ten years and convince our financial partners that these are good deals, but a lot of it still comes down to kind of a gut feel. And I've been doing site selection in this process for 20-some years for different companies, and Lincoln has a very different feel to it. I was amazed when I came here, and what you guys have done with the Haymarket District and the streetscapes and everything continuing from east to west and tying in over to Antelope Valley is fairly unprecedented, and it's a huge draw for us to see that kind of capital commitment from the city. And then that in conjunction with what the university is doing and the tremendous capital improvements that they're doing as well. I mean, this is a, I'll be surprised if you don't see several of my competitors coming in after the fact as well. This is a pretty incredible city environment to come into, and we're very excited about the opportunity.
Better set than I could, so.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anybody else who'd like to speak to this item? Staff questions? Next item, please.
Next would be item 32, approving supplement number two to the Preliminary Engineering Services Agreement between the city and Shimmer Associates for additional work necessary to complete the federal aid project at North 14th Street and eastbound off-ramp to US Highway 6.
Good afternoon. Craig Aldridge, Public Works Engineering Services. When we originally drafted the contracts for Shimmer Associates to handle the preliminary design for this project, we did not include any hours to complete a noise study. At the time, we didn't think it was necessary. Now that we have gotten a little farther into the design and the environmental process, the Nebraska Department of Roads has respectfully disagreed with that assessment and has asked that Shimmer's complete a noise study. So the supplement that we're asking for approval for is to add hours back into Shimmer's contract to complete that noise study. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions regarding this resolution.
Any questions? This would come in the form of an unfunded mandate, is that what you're telling us? Department of Roads said we have to do this?
Yes.
Okay, well, that's an unfunded mandate.
John? When you say noise study, what are the possible impacts of noise? What are we talking about here? Why does that need to be?
Well, as part of the environmental process, they want to make sure that we're not increasing decibel levels to a point where they're a detriment to surrounding properties. That's part of the, part of the federal requirements for the highway safety improvement funds.
Okay, so this is partly for other residential properties?
Residential and commercial, yes.
Okay. Any other questions? Staff questions? Thank you.
I'm here for the next one as well. So I'm not moving, sorry.
I'll call item 33, approving a utility services agreement between the city and Lincoln Electric System, setting out the various duties and fees in connection with the relocation of electrical distribution facilities for federal aid project at the intersection of South Cottington and West Van Dorn.
So for, again, this is a highway safety improvement project federally funded 90%. We are reaching the final design stage of this project. One stage that we've gotten to is we're starting to acquire the right-of-way and the easements needed to construct. We're also getting to a point where we're ready to turn some of the private utilities loose on relocation prior to construction of the project. As such, it has been determined that we will need to relocate LES facilities that are currently situated on private easement in the area. And as such, the federal government requires that we, the city, enter into an agreement with said utility. So the agreement you see before you is, again, a federal requirement of the highway safety improvement funds for LES to relocate their lines with an easement.
Okay. Questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Staff questions? Next item, please.
Next, I'll call items 34 and 35 together. They are approving a professional services agreement between the city and Olson Associates to provide NEPA evaluation and documentation for the 48th and Calvert and 56th and Calvert Traffic Signal Project, and approving a professional service agreement between the city and Olson Associates to provide NEPA evaluation and documentation for the South 17th Traffic Signal Project.
Erin Sokolik with Public Works and Utilities. Both of these resolutions would allow us to work with Olson Associates to do the federal requirements to do the NEPA study. These studies will evaluate the social, economic, and environmental impacts that these projects will have on the area. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions? Okay, thank you. Anybody who'd like to speak to this item, these items? Staff questions? Next item, please.
Next would be item 36, adopting the Lincoln Electric System annual budget for 2015 to become effective January 1st, 2015. And I would note that this will have action on December 8th.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. I'm Kevin Wales, CEO and administrator for the Lincoln Electric System, and Laura Kapuska, our chief financial officer. As you all know, we provided detailed briefings to you all with respect to the budget and our lack of a proposed rate increase. And what Laura would like to do now, so for the audience, is to make sure we go through kind of a brief overview of that, as well as an explanation of the resolution.
I do have copies for you all. Would you like them?
Sure.
Okay. So what we're here to do is approve of our operating capital budget, as Kevin just mentioned, for a total of $345.8 million. I won't go through our full budget process because I know I've explained it in the past, but it is almost encompassing a whole year. We start very early in the year with reviewing our headcount budget, our capital budget, our operating budget. It goes through many levels of review before it goes to our board committees, our Budget and Rates Committee, and then goes to the full committee. The point is that we do a lot of reviews before we get it to this point, so we take it very serious, the process, and our board members are very engaged in the process also. When we went through that process this year, we have concluded with a point of asking for no rate adjustment. Started out with, that we looked like we needed a little bit of one, but we were able to work through a number of things and cut some costs and end up with a 0% rate adjustment. Okay, just a little bit of background, again, on the budget. You know, our goal as public power is to provide low-cost, reliable energy, and we feel that this budget does support that. We also establish our budgets to be alignment with our core values and our strategic priorities. And then we have a number of financial metrics that we look at when setting the budget, the primary one being our debt service coverage, and we talk about that each year, that our goal is to set it at two times debt service coverage. This budget does meet that metric. We also look at a fixed charge coverage, which is very similar to debt service coverage, but it also covers additional fixed costs besides our principal and interest on our debt, such things as like the payment law of tax and our city dividend are also included in that metric. This budget achieves a 1.35 fixed charge coverage. Debt to equity, our goal is to get to 60%. We're not there yet, but this budget does move us along the goal of getting to that 60% debt equity. The liquidity target is 74 days cash on hand at the end of any month. This budget does support that. The budget does also require about a $30 million financing, and at this point, we're anticipating that will be an issue of commercial paper. And in order to maintain that liquidity, 30 million is what it looks like that we'll need right now, and then we will true up that number as we get closer to the time of issuing that commercial paper. And then finally, as you've seen us annually, we're trying to develop our rate stabilization fund to, and in doing that, our goal each year is to put a $2 million deposit into that fund. That is included in the budget, and I'm going to talk in a little bit how we're also going to, we've budgeted to pull money out of the rate stabilization fund to use, for use in 2015. The other thing that we look at when we're developing our budget is what is the growth of our customer base and the sales and revenues that come from that growth? So you can see here in this bottom box that our customers are expected to grow slightly, our number of customers, and with that, our energy sales are also expected to grow by about 0.2% to a very small amount. But the positive thing to be said about that is there's a lot of utilities across the country that are actually seeing negative energy sales growth. We are still seeing positive growth, and so that's something very positive also to be said about Lincoln. Okay, this next pie chart here is an overview of the operating authorization, which totals $275 million, just a little bit over that. I'll just point out a couple of things on that. The biggest slice of the pie is our power costs, and we talk about those every year. They're roughly about half of our operating authorization, and in 2015, they're 51%. So that's the cost to purchase or produce energy for our customers. The next piece is the transmission cost, so that's the cost to get the energy to our customers. Not a big part of our budget, only about 4% of the budget. The next piece, the debt service, that's our principal and interest that we pay on our bonds. If you stop there and you add up those three pieces, transmission, debt service, and power costs, that's about, that's 73% of our operating authorization. And pointing that out because those are really the costs that we don't have a lot of ability to impact, to, debt service often is issued to build generating plants or transmission lines, and so in whole, those costs are what it costs us to build, deliver, and buy energy for our customers. The next piece is the payment law of tax. That's 5%, so that is a formula-based rate. And just as we've pointed out here in the box, about 18% of that goes to the city of Lincoln. You can see that the majority of that goes to LPS. The other operations category, about 7%, and things that are included in that are like our sustainable energy program, which is budgeted at $4 million, the same amount in 2015 as it was in 2014. That also includes things like maintenance, transmission and distribution maintenance. It would be things like tree trimming, property liability insurance. A lot of things are carried in that piece of the pie. And then finally, 15% is for payroll and benefits for our staff, and we are not including any increase in headcount for 2015. We're staying at 476. Okay, so this next slide is just really comparing what I just talked with you about to 2014 to see how the year-over-year increase, what it looks like. If you started at the top, you can see right away that the power costs, there's a significant increase in power costs, so I'm going to explain that just a little bit. It's about a $15 million increase between '14 and '15, but the majority of that, what you don't see is there's offsetting wholesale revenues. This has to do with our participation in the Southwest Power Pool, the integrated market, which started in March of this year. And when we first budgeted for the Southwest Power Pool, we netted together purchases and sales to and from Southwest Power Pool. and sales to and from Southwest Power Pool. As we got into the year, we realized that the accounting rules actually require us to, we can't net those. So, purchases from the Southwest Power Pool have to go through expenses, and then sales to the Southwest Power Pool go into wholesale revenues. So, we've separated those out now. And so, that's why you see the increase in power costs in 2015, because the offsetting revenues are now coming through wholesale revenues. So, you can see 15.5 million increase in power costs, offset by 16.6 million of wholesale revenues. So, those two really offset each other. Going down from that, there's a little bit of increase in pilot, that's formula-based again, so, it's about $60,000. There's a little bit of increase year-over-year in our debt service that's primarily related to existing debt that we have outstanding, a little bit related to the commercial paper that we'll issue. And then finally, 1.6 million increase in ONM and ANG. Oh, the one other thing I want to mention about power costs is that part of that increase is also being offset by use of our rate stabilization fund. So, we have an extended outage at the Laramie River Station in Wyoming. We own a portion of that plant. It's a 13-week outage in 2015, which is extensive amount of work is being done. So, our plan is to use $2 million of the rate stabilization fund to fund part of those costs that are considered one-time, non-recurring type costs. And there's also some costs that are being done in that outage, which we are going to amortize over a three-year period instead of charging them all through rates in one year. It makes sense to amortize it so that, because of the length of those projects. Okay, now, we're going to look at the capital budget for 2015. The capital budget is 70.6 million, roughly about 6 million above the 2014 budget. And if you look in the box to the left, those are some of the major projects that are included in next year's budget. The mobile meter reading project, that is a project where we're replacing customers' meters with one-way, not-smart meters. Most of that work will be, will be finished in 2016. A lot of those meters will be installed in 2015. And then we have some other projects, such as the Laramie River Station, that plant in Wyoming. In addition to the outage that they have going on, a lot of those operating costs, we also have capital work that'll be done at the plant next year for about $5.6 million. And I think the other one I'd point out is the future LES facilities. We've been talking with you all about that for a couple of years, but that was based on a study that we had done that looked at the growth of our customers and identifying what was the best way, where we needed to be located to serve those customers. And so, it's identified a need for a facility on the south part of town. So, we're in the process right now of an RFP of looking for, to purchase that land. And if it gets, it looks like it's probably not going to get purchased this year, so that purchase would take place next year. And then, my second to final slide here, this is kind of a historical look at the authorization over the last, excuse me, the last four years. We've kind of talked about really what the biggest increases are between 2014 and 2015, and it really jumps out again that the biggest increase is in those power costs. And again, it's related to that Southwest Power Pool and how we have to account for those costs. So, as we went through all of this, we ended up with identifying that we did not need a rate adjustment. So, we're not here today to ask you for approval of a rate adjustment, but we do have a number of things in the budget resolution that we've provided to you that we wanted to go over, that I wanted to cover with you, because it's a little bit longer than what we typically provide. So, the first thing the budget resolution is asking for is approval of the 2015 budget, both the operating and the capital budget, which I just reviewed. The second thing that it's asking for, and our budget resolution every year asks for this, is for, asking for approval to, of our intention to reimburse ourselves for our capital expenditures through the future issuance of bonds. And this is an IRS rule that we have to do. We have to state the intention every year and have it approved by our governing body in order to allow us to issue reimbursement bonds. Number three is one that's definitely out of the norm. So, we're asking council to approve a 2014 supplemental authorization. So, last year, you approved an authorization for us for our operating and capital expenditures, and then we got into the Southwest Power Pool. And as I described, this change in the accounting treatment could cause us to exceed our 2014 authorization, because the authorization does not look at revenues, it only looks at expenses. So, LES's general counsel worked with the city attorney, and they developed that this would be the best way to go forward with this, is to ask for the authorization for additional for 2014. And then, in the long term, they're going to, we're going to, we need to work out a more workable solution, because this could happen in other years. But that's part of what's in the budget resolution this year.
The increased authorization has to be offset by revenues, however, that's...
Yeah.
And then, the fourth item in the budget resolution is asking for authority to amortize a portion of those costs that are from that extended outage at the Laramie River Station. It's an accounting rule that if you're going to do that, your governing board has to approve that. And so, the resolution allows us to amortize up to $3 million worth of projects, and that decision on how much to actually amortize would be made after the outage was complete in 2015. And then also included in the package this year was a credit facility ordinance. And what that would allow us to do is establish one or more credit facilities, not to exceed $50 million. And we don't have the plan right now to borrow anything against those facilities, but upon issuing an RFP, it was, the cost was very inexpensive, and so, in light of the environmental and other changing things on our horizon, we thought it was prudent to have this in place so that if needed, it would be there, and it was an inexpensive way to have, to have this be available. So, those are everything that's included in the packet of materials that we sent you. Any questions?
Is the credit facility in our...
There's an ordinance in there, there's a separate ordinance.
Okay, I must be missing that.
It's quite lengthy.
Okay.
Question?
Go ahead, Carl.
All right. Okay, so, in the budget, you've got a $2 million amount for the rate stabilization fund.
Correct.
Okay. But then also, you're taking money out of the rate stabilization fund to help cover the cost, the expected increased cost of power from the plant being down next summer.
Right, right. Yep.
All right.
So, it's kind of a net $2 million deposit, $2 million out.
Okay.
That's what the budget calls for.
And, but that's what that amount is, I mean, that's what that fund is for, right?
Right, right. When we looked at the outage cost, right. We had a number of one-time, non-recurring type costs, and that lines up with exactly why we said we'd use the rate stabilization fund.
That's really, that's to keep us from actually raising rates for something that wouldn't happen the following year, and you'd be building on that. So, it's to basically protect the customers.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Anybody who'd like to speak to this item?
My name is Anne Post. I am here on behalf of the Lincoln Independent Business Association, and I'm here today to express the organization's support for the LES 2015 budget, which does not include a rate increase. In the past seven out of 10 years, Leba has come before this council and the LES Board asking that rate increases be either reduced or eliminated. Electric rates affect every aspect of life in Lincoln, from household budgets to businesses' bottom line. Even large employers are price-sensitive to electric rates. For example, in 2012, an effective rate increase of 3.5 percent resulted in Vayance, a Lincoln employer of over 550 people, paying an additional $150,000 in electric costs. For the upcoming budget year, LES and the LES Board made tough decisions and prioritized maintaining electric rates. Weighing the needs and wants of a large organization is never an easy task, but LES rose to the challenge. Leba would like to thank LES and the LES Board for their efforts to maintain Lincoln's rates and take care of Lincoln's ratepayers. Currently, LES is working to add renewables to their energy portfolio, and Leba would like to express their support for the reasoned approach LES took in developing their Sun Shares Program. This program empowers ratepayers with the means and desire to expand renewables in Lincoln while recognizing the fiscal constraints that are faced by others. The Sun Shares Program is a prescient example of balance, allowing Lincoln ratepayers to work towards a more sustainable future without placing the burden on those that can so ill afford it. As a participating member in the Sun Shares Program, Leba encourages LES to continue to promote this program and this program model as it diversifies its energy portfolio. Finally, Leba would like to encourage LES to work closely with the city of Lincoln while developing plans for a South Lincoln Service Center. Both the Lincoln Police Department and Lincoln Fire and Rescue are currently looking for South Lincoln locations. There may be opportunities for LES to work with Lincoln's public safety departments to recognize efficiencies in both locating facilities and building those facilities. Finally, to summarize, Leba would like to thank LES and the LES Board for the lengths to which it goes to provide Lincoln with affordable and reliable energy, to engage members in supporting its new programs, and to prioritize the needs, these needs, while still avoiding a rate increase for 2015. Thank you very much, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Thank you. Anybody else who'd like to speak to this item? Staff questions? Next item, please.
That concludes our public hearing portion. We can move into the voting session.
Go ahead.
Public hearing ordinance to second reading are items 28 through 30. Public hearing resolutions, item 31 is Comp Plan Conformance 14002, the 18th NP Multifamily Redevelopment Project, introduced by Camp.
Served.
Moved by Trent.
Second.
Second by...
Give it to Carl.
By Carl. Discussion, call or roll.
Christensen.
Yes.
Cook.
Yes.
Emery.
Yes.
Eskridge.
Fellers. Yes.
Gaylor Baird.
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Item 32 is supplement number two to the preliminary engineering services agreement with Schimmer Associates, introduced by Camp.
Served.
Moved by Trent.
Second.
Second by Roy. Discussion, call or roll.
Christensen.
Yes.
Cook.
Yes.
Emery.
Yes.
Eskridge.
Yes.
Fellers.
Yes.
Gaylor Baird.
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Item 34 is the professional services agreement with Olson Associates for the 56th and Calvert and 48th and Calvert Traffic Signal Project, introduced by Camp.
Served.
Moved by Trent.
Second.
Second by Carl. Discussion, call or roll.
Christensen.
Yes.
Cook.
Yes.
Emery.
Yes.
Eskridge.
Yes.
Fellers.
Yes.
Gaylor Baird.
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Moved by Trent.
Second.
Second by Carl. Discussion, call or roll.
Christensen.
Yes.
Cook.
Yes.
Emery.
Yes.
Eskridge.
Yes.
Fellers.
Yes.
Gaylor Baird.
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Item 35 is approving the professional services agreement with Olson Associates for the South 17th Traffic Signal Project, introduced by Camp.
Served.
Second. Moved by Trent, second by Roy. Discussion, call or roll.
Christensen.
Yes.
Cook.
Yes.
Emery.
Yes.
Eskridge.
Yes.
Fellers.
Yes.
Gaylor Baird.
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Item 36 is adopting the Lincoln Electric System annual budget for 2015. This will have action on December 8th.
Correct.
Ordinance's third reading is the text amendment 14007. This is various amendments to Title 27 of the Lincoln Municipal Code, introduced by Gaylor Baird.
Served.
Second.
Second by Carl. Discussion, call or roll.
Christensen.
Yes.
Cook.
Yes.
Emery.
Yes.
Eskridge.
Yes.
Fellers.
Yes.
Gaylor Baird.
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Item 38, amending the pay schedule for the employee group whose classifications are assigned to the pay range prefixed by the letter C to change the pay range of utility supervisor from C-26 to C-28, introduced by Gaylor Baird.
Served.
Second.
Second by Trent. Discussion, call or roll.
Christensen.
Yes.
Cook.
Yes.
Emery.
Yes.
Eskridge.
Yes.
Fellers.
Yes.
Gaylor Baird.
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Item 39 is amending the pay schedule for the employee group whose classifications are assigned to the pay range prefixed by the letter E to create the classification of human resources generalist, introduced by Gaylor Baird.
Served.
Second.
Second by Carl. Discussion, call or roll.
Christensen.
Yes.
Cook.
Yes.
Emery.
Yes.
Eskridge.
Yes.
Fellers.
Yes.
Gaylor Baird.
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero.